And we are live.
Okay, go ahead Jerry.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-10 and regulations governing remote meetings NJAC 5:39-1.5, I hereby declare this meeting of the Homedale Township Zoning Board to be open and announce that adequate and electronic notice of this meeting was provided. In notices dated January 8th, 2021 and February 26th, 2021, notices were sent to the Asbury Park Press, Two River Times, and posted on the bulletin board and on the main access door to Town Hall. Notices were also filed in the clerk's office and posted on the township's website www.homedaltownship.com. This meeting is being conducted on a remote electronic basis using Zoom with live streaming on Facebook and YouTube and will be archived on the township's YouTube and Facebook pages. As such, recordings of a public meeting are public records, subject to the Open Public Meetings Records Act. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions or provide comments once the meeting is open to the public. At that time, you will need to use the raise your hand feature on the bottom of the screen and you will be invited into the meeting by the chairperson one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in and asked to provide your name and address for the record. You may also dial nine if accessing this meeting by telephone.
Hey, roll call please.
Ms. Sabring. You're muted, Val. I see you. Mr. Blum.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Bupolino.
Here.
Ms. Campus.
Here.
Mr. Hearn.
Here.
Mr. Orphanatopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Pesci.
Here.
Ms. Kolor and Ms. Latif. Okay, stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You just remain standing for a minute to our military employees who have been wounded or killed in action? Okay, thank you.
Ready to go to item one?
Yep, go ahead Jerry.
Okay, Praveen Sharma, 119 Crawford's Corner Road, block 11, lot 68, in the R40B zone. ZB variance number 445. Applicant seeks variance relief to construct a new two-story garage, 26 feet high with first floor of 14,300 square feet and one floor of 13,146 square feet for private use on owner's property to store luxury cars. The building will be located on the existing area of an existing solar field and the solar panels relocated to the roof of the new structure. The building will be heated and air-conditioned, 104 by 130 feet, with a bump out of 40 feet times 16 feet for foyer and car elevator.
Okay, now, we're not going to be hearing this application tonight. However, it's going to be carried without further notice to the public to the April 21st meeting. It's April 21st. There will... At this point, it appears that that's likely also to be a Zoom meeting. And prior to that meeting, one can get the agenda of that evening's meeting and that will include the Zoom link for anyone who wishes to contact us. With regard to that application, we did have an engineer's review letter of regard to completeness and it deemed at this point in time that the application was not complete. Bob, have you had any contact or updates with regard to that?
No, Mr. Chairman. Not since our review, not since our completeness letter.
Okay, so as it's incomplete, it's not yet ready for a hearing.
Correct.
Hopefully, we'll get some updates soon.
Correct.
Okay, anybody have any questions with regard to that item? Saying none, we'll go on, move to item number two.
Hackensack Meridian Health Realty Corporation, 737 North Beer Street, 36, lot 35.94, in the M ZB variance number 443. Applicant seeks an amended application for one variance approval to operate a weekend-only farmer's market in temporary tents located in the parking lot area.
Okay, Mr. Junko.
Mr. Chairman and Board, good evening. The application is to convert, if you will, the temporary permits that had been issued for this farmer's market to become a permitted... To seek a use variance to permit the activity on the site. Our client had begun that program as part of the township outreach and throughout the time of its formation and proposal, they've worked with the township officials. We actually require a use variance because a market like this is not a permitted use in the MEM zone. It is on the hospital campus and has been for the past multi-months. Currently, it's in the site and currently, and it is proposed for the area that is used for the valet parking. And it no longer, and on the week, it has a light... It's reported to me that it has a very light use, but on the weekends, it's not used at all and it's worked out very well in their operations to date. Now, this market, as I said, is part of the hospital's commitment to the community involvement. It's been operating successfully under the permits and as we say, we would like to ask it to continue. In order to make this application speedy and not overly expensive, we did submit a copy of a previously approved site plan that is currently going... That is currently being effectuated with the redevelopment of the emergency room. And that part, this portion of the work on this side is complete in the sense that these parking lots are available. Our client intends to continue that if the board grants the approval. And I have this evening a witness, Andrew Janu, our licensed professional planner. And we're ready to proceed. If you could cause Mr. Janu to be sworn, I'll ask him to present his testimony and exhibits.
Let's just, as a housekeeping, Loretta, notices are in order and all the escrows and everything is in order?
Yes, yes, everything's in order.
Marty, if I... Mr. Plager, I just would like to address the notice. There, in the application and in the review letters, it says 35.04. Our notice was from the entire outside of the campus, which includes 35.04. And a portion of this activity is on another lot that was properly noticed. So it wasn't just limited to that lot, it was the entire hospital campus and we served everyone within that notice.
Thank you, and we duly noted and that that was appropriate. Just also make sure no one has any conflicts with this applicant or vice versa. Okay, seeing none. I guess this is a good time to swear in both Mr. Janu and our professionals. If everyone just raised their right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay, so for the record, Mr. Janu, Ms. Keller and Mr. Buck have been sworn in.
Okay, Junko, I'd just like to ask you to clarify one point of what you just said. You said there is a temporary use permit for the... For this farmer's market? Could you find what that is?
Well, Mr. Chairman, they've been operating it under a permit that was issued by the, I guess, the planning department, I'm not sure. But it's been with the township's knowledge and with the zoning officers' activity. And basically, it's my understanding that when this was proposed, it was accepted and it was only after they started that they became... That the township or anyone recognized that this would require a use variance. And as a result of that, we filed the application and the time, of course, it takes from the time to prepare the application review and get to here, they continued to operate.
When did that temporary use start?
I don't know. I'll find out. In May of 2020.
Okay, so was under pandemic conditions?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so there were a variety of exceptions permitted by the state because of the pandemic. Okay, fine, go ahead. You want to present? Mr. Janic, present.
Andrew Janu is our planner. And I guess the first thing I'd want to do, however, if I may, is directly address Mr. Bucko's letter. In the first instance, I can report that the progress of the... Item number one, he asked for a report on the progress of the emergency room construction. The construction is ongoing. Portions of the, what would be the front yard, if you will, are still incomplete. The facade on the front elevation has been installed and interior work in the hospital is going on. The second question that he asked was, how are the tents secured? The tents are brought by the vendors, they're secured by weights at the ground level. And if there was a weather condition that had high winds that would... Or something that could create an issue, they would simply cancel the event for that day. Then with regard to the third comment, where the traffic patterns, actually, the aisle will be closed, but likewise, the portion of the valet parking lot is also closed for this event. And yes, we're asking for a... Okay, they have a comment for it, do not require any comment. So now, I would ask Andrew Janu. Andy, you or others, under your direction, prepare any exhibits about this application.
Yes, we prepared an aerial exhibit depicting where the tents would be located. And I could put that up.
I would ask you to put that on the... Unless, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put that on the screen and let Mr. Janu just...
Please, go ahead.
All right, John, why don't we just quickly run through his credentials and acceptance of the next...
Can everyone see the aerial at this point?
Not yet. What?
All right, just bear with me because I'm... Close out for that. Okay, I'm sorry. So in terms of qualifications, my name is Andrew Janu, I'm principal with the firm of Beacon Planning and Consulting Services. We're located at 315 Highway 34, Colts Neck, New Jersey. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, managing member of the firm and a founder of the firm. We've been operating here in Colts Neck since 1998. I am currently serving as the planner for the borough of Carteret, as well as for the township of Livingston and redevelopment planner for Tom's River, Plainsboro, Flemington and South Amboy. Appeared before this board, as well as the planning board in Homedale numerous occasions and capacity as a public and private planner throughout the state of New Jersey.
Any questions on his credentials?
Thank you.
Except their credentials as offered?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If you could now, Andrew, put, Andy, put up the aerial.
Try this again.
Okay.
Is it visible or...
Andy, you've had an opportunity to speak with the hospital officials and of course, understand the application. Could you explain to the board the operations of the farmer's market?
Certainly. Is the aerial visible at this point? Yes. Okay, so the farmer, the location of the farmer's market is here where you see these yellow bars. Those are essentially the extent of the location of the tents. There would be maximum three rows. They've operated as three rows previously. And these are located in an area that's currently reserved for valet parking proximate to the emergency room and you see the ambulance staging area just here to the south of what functions as the farmer's market. The farmer's market, when it operates, is open for a period of approximately four hours. Generally, it's been operating between the hours of 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. It provides opportunities for local produce growers, berry growers, people who make local honey farmers and the like to have a location within the hospital parking lot in order to be able to sell their agricultural products. As you know, this property is located within the M District, the medical district. Now, interestingly enough, in addition to hospitals and office buildings and the like, the medical district does permit a permanent farm, farmer's markets, meaning farmer's markets that have permanent structures and they do permit farm stands as accessory to farm uses. This is a little bit of a twist on that concept, which is permitted within the zone in that this is proposed as essentially a pop-up market that will occur on a reoccurring basis, hopefully weekly and provide local farmers and local agriculturists the opportunity to have a location to sell their products. And in addition to having done so in an open-air concept, which as we know during the COVID crisis has become something that's really sought after, but we think thereafter is becoming more and more accepted. And quite frankly, farmer's markets, open-air farmer's markets exist throughout the state of New Jersey in other locations and this is a great way for local produce and flowers and honey to be offered to the public. So what we're seeking this evening is a use variance in order to allow this to occur on a permanent basis, meaning that we would like to have this on a reoccurring basis, given that it's not a permitted use. It would operate as it has operated under the temporary permit currently. These would be tents that are brought by the vendors. They're set up, they're waited, they're there for the four hours for the sale. This is something that's frequented not only by hospital staff and visitors to the hospital, but by the community overall. But a chance to purchase, you know, fresh produce in a very safe and open-air environment. The variance we're seeking tonight is a D1 variance. In order to qualify as a D1 variance, there have to be one of three conditions that need to be addressed. One is that there is a hardship and that's not the case here. One is that there is an inherently beneficial use that's promoted. And here, we do have the hospital property. The hospital operation in of itself is an inherently beneficial use. It's been consistently the findings of the boards in Homedale. And what this does is something that's supportive of the hospital, supportive of the staff of the hospital and supportive of the community. So it is an extension of the hospital to that extent. However, we also believe the site is particularly suited for this use. It's proven to operate safely and efficiently over the course that it has operated since May of 2020. And we do think it's done so, quite frankly, without incident and is situated in an area that not only can accommodate it, but that is proximate to substantial parking fields and the like. Understanding that the visitors to this area aren't here for a great length of time. They come and generally a 15, 20-minute visit, they pick up their produce and they leave. And as you can see in the aerial, just to the north of these, there is a ample parking field and available parking for this type of purpose. When we're doing this type of application, we need to reconcile this with not only your master plan, but with the municipal land use law in order to demonstrate the public purpose. With respect to your master plan, the recent reexamination talks specifically about the rural character and promoting the rural character of the farms and the parkland and the like within the community. This is an outlet for the local farmers to have the ability to sell their produce, to offer their goods. So we think it does promote that goal. We also talk about providing a friendly business environment. And again, as we know, local farmers and producers always look for an outlet for their goods. This is something that's not specific to one farm, but where we can have a number of vendors selling a variety of goods, which is a greater attraction than, say, the roadside stand where you're really looking with one producer perhaps limited inventory. So we think this is on point with promoting all those business ties to the community that are within your master plan. With respect to the municipal land use law, under 4055D2, there are purposes that we need to reconcile with and show that we promote with this application. And first and foremost is A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. Quite frankly, the marriage of an open-air farmer's market in a hospital parking lot where we have the infrastructure, we have the ability to park cars, we have vendors here that not only support the hospital, but provide a local outlet for goods to to hospital staff and to the residents. In an open-air market, which we are learning increasingly in terms of health perspective, is a better, healthier way to shop than within enclosed quarters and even post-COVID. I think open-air markets are going to be welcomed as they have been in cities and other towns in the past. So I do think this is something that is on point with Section A of the MLU law. With respect to Section G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial and industrial uses in open spaces, both public and private, according to their respective requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. Again, we have capacity on the site in order to accommodate this for the four hours per week that it's going to be promoted. We have infrastructure that's available, as Mr. Junko alluded and in talking to the hospital staff, that valet area is not regularly used on any great level and on weekends, it's virtually unused, which is why it was placed in that location to begin with. It was just an ability to essentially have an additional use for the property at its... At the time when it's less utilized. So we think it's on point with that. We do, we do believe it provides a great outlet for local agriculture to sell their products. So we think we're on point with that. And then finally, Section M is to encourage the coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development into more efficient uses of land. Well, again, I can't think of a more efficient use of land where we're offering existing infrastructure for a period of approximately four hours a week in order to have local vendors an opportunity to sell the produce that they grow largely locally. It's all local products that are being offered here. It's not a large farmer's market, it's limited to that area that you see. It's a row of three tents, so it's not attracting statewide farmers, if you will. It's intended to be local and to serve local. And it is an incredibly efficient use of land, given that the tents are set up and removed and then the property goes back into utilization for valet parking at the times that it's required. So I do think we're on point with those purposes of the municipal land use law. With respect to the negative criteria, we have to reconcile that this will not only promote the public good, but will not create a negative impact on any of the neighboring properties. And in this case, we have the luxury of having an operational history since May of 2020. This is operated there just as it's proposed to continue, without incident, without any complaints. It is, as you can see, proximate to residents here to the east. However, there have been no issues or any conflicts or complaints from those residents, to the best of my knowledge. None that I'm aware of and in speaking to the operators and the staff at Meridian, there have been no issues with respect to the operation. So again, it's four hours a week. It's a great outlet for these local resources. And we don't think it creates any type of nuisance or excess pattern that creates a problem for any of the neighbors. But we also need to reconcile this with your master plan and quite frankly, the omission of this use within your land use ordinance. And here I pro offer that similar uses are contemplated in the M zone. The M zone permits farms and allows farm stands associated with those farms. Obviously, this is not a farm. It is an active and operating medical use. But in terms of the context of the M use here, a permanent farm stand would be a permitted use here. Here, we're essentially proposing somewhat of a hybrid of the use. The concept of having an outlet for agricultural products is very much in line with what your ordinance promotes. However, in this case, what we're asking for is to do it on a temporary basis, weekly, although permanently as a use that's permitted on the site. This will be something that's there once a week for, again, operating open for about four hours and you'd have to consider an hour on either end for setup and closure of the facilities. But it's fairly innocuous, fairly benign use, a short time, once a week. And it provides a service that has been appreciated by the community and could continue to do so. So when we look at this under the context of the reconciliation that's required under the D1 variance, again, it's very similar to the uses that were contemplated in the zone. I put on the record what those distinctions are. I don't think there's anything that's a significant nuisance or identified as a nuisance or problematic in terms of the operation of this. There's sufficient parking available. The site is particularly suited in that it has this excess capacity at the time of the week where this is proposed. So I think on balance, the bones are here for the use to be granted. I think it's a good use. I think it's something that the community welcomes and hopefully will continue and have that outlet for residents to be able to pick up fresh produce.
Andy, I'd like you to specifically address the consistency of this use variance with regard to the intent and purpose of master plan and zone and ordinances would be considered under an enhanced quality of proof. I think that's a reconciliation, right?
Absolutely, John. As I mentioned, the master plan talks about promoting the rural character, promoting the agricultural uses in the community and promoting local businesses. This does all of that for a period of time every week without having something that's permanent in place. So with respect to the reconciliation with the master plan, I think it's on point with the goals and objectives that were reiterated in the 2020 reexamination. And I put three purposes of the municipal land use law that I believe are further here. It's an appropriate location, it serves the general welfare and supporting the hospital and supporting an open-air market that's a healthy type of shopping environment. And certainly, it's promoting an efficient use of land and lessening the cost of development. Because this is something that's, that, again, will only operate for a short time every week and having a permanent structure that will be closed for a majority of the time and only reopened at those times, you know, it makes a lot more sense to operate it this way. And quite frankly, I think the public enjoys shopping in these type of environments. I know we often do it and you only have to point to the Union Square Market in New York every weekend and you can see how much the people love open-air markets and the opportunity to buy fresh produce, fresh milk, fresh honey and those types of products. So I think it's absolutely consistent with the master plan, John, as well as the purposes of the municipal land use law.
Thank you, Andy. I have no other direct questions of Mr. Janu.
So it's time to, either Kate or Bob, our board professionals, have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do, just for clarification. Andy, is the market going to be signed? So the people from the general public don't come down where the, you know, the emergency department entrances? Will it be signed, say, farmer's market parking? You know, so they have some direction as to how to, where to go and park?
Mr. Bucko, I can advise you that the hospital administration does place signs and does, takes all the precautions to keep the emergency area clear for its needs. And those signs, those signs are put in place, but they're taken down when the market's not in session, so to speak.
Okay, and the other question I have, this is Saturday and Sunday or just Saturday?
Right now, it's just Saturday. Our application is actually seeking the ability to have it one day a week. As it stands right now, the Saturday has worked out well. However, there's been a bunch of comments to the administration suggesting that they might like to see it on a weekday afternoon. That's not yet decided, but of course, what we're asking for is to be able to have it one day a week for the four hours during that day. Typically, in the afternoon to early evening hours because that gives more of the hospital staff because the shifts change in that timeframe to utilize it. And it seems, it seems to have been working out very well in that timeframe. But it's not limited to just Saturday or Sunday, but it is limited to one day a week and we're asking for it to be one day a week for four hours. Okay.
Andy mentioned that you need an hour to take up and sit down, so what would the... Andy mentioned that that you need an hour to take up and set down. So what would the? What would you like us to include in the resolution, the way of limiting hours per uh the ones for this once a week?
Mr. Chairman, I would request that the operational hours of the uh market be designated not to exceed four hours.
I mean, the hours that it's open and not counting the setup time.
It it, what it's been taking is about one hour on each end to set up and take down and four hours of operation. So what we'd like to do is have the four hours of operation and uh up to an hour to uh set up and an hour to take down.
Once per week without specifying?
One day a week, that's correct.
And without specifying which hours?
At this point, we'd prefer to have that flexibility because that might change, but it is intended to continue between two and six. Because that has gotten a a good reception.
Okay, Bob, you want to continue?
Yes, please. Um John, maybe uh now, these are a series of. Different sized tents, right? Or are they ten by tens, twenty by ten by twenties?
Well, Bob, there, we don't control the size per se. The vendor brings the tent. And the number of vendors, sometimes they share them, sometimes they bring them independently. But however, I think the important criteria is that they be adequately secured. So that if a a gust of wind that came up or somebody bumped a uh walked into it or something like that, it wouldn't uh. Move around or cause any uh potential risk. And that's why the vendors are required to secure the tents. With a weighted system. We don't want everybody poking uh nails and spikes into the pavement, but for the most part. The idea of the weight works very well.
Okay, that that was one of my concerns also was the fact that, uh you know, you secure these sometimes with the spikes. And then that would create, you know, uh holes in the parking lot, which would then create, you know.
It would cut the lifespan of the parking lot in half.
Absolutely. Um. Andy, you'd you'd mentioned at the end of your testimony that they would probably have milk. So that would mean freezers.
They may. No, typically, those would come in coolers, uh uh, ice and coolers and large, you know, marine type coolers.
Oh, okay. So, you know, so there wouldn't be like a generator to keep a refrigerator going or?
No, no, from what I've seen with these, they're, you know, the cheese products, yogurts. I mean, those are the types of things that are offered and those are generally served out of the marine type coolers, the larger coolers that are kept in.
Cause I was. Maybe I can help with that a little bit. Right now, there's an ice cream vendor who who's been coming there and operating successfully.
Okay, but like I said, to for refrigeration or something, it would have to be like a small gas generator and. Then that, you know.
There have not been any generators. It's not, it's four hours and uh. The coolers seem to keep everything at the temperature that these products need to be. And of course, the uh. Mo- most of the produce can just be at a, you know, ambient temperature.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, is a follow up to that. Uh is there any board of health permit stated if you're dealing with food?
The answer to that is yes. Each of the vendors has to obtain a board of health permit, which, as you know. Home Dale goes through the Monmouth County Board of Health. And each of the vendors applies for and is a prerequisite to be able to open that day to have a a valid. Um board of health permit or, I don't know if they call it a permit or a certification for that user, but. They have to go to the board of health and register and meet the criteria.
Ralph, are they bringing in portasands and things like that?
I heard part of that. I, they're bringing in blank and I didn't pick up what you said. I'm sorry.
Fans for bathroom use.
Oh, the bathrooms, the the hospital facilities are available. So someone can walk, walk over to the hospital and use the uh the bathroom in the hospital. It's been very limited use and in fact. Uh when I asked that question of uh my client, he said they weren't aware of anyone even it even using it, but it's available right there and. Uh from the uh area where the uh the vendors are, it's a short walk to the uh closest entrance. Uh and it it's, it seems to have worked out fine, but there's not an intent to bring a porta potties or uh. Uh uh to the site. It just has, it it's been nice. It hasn't been overwhelmingly busy. But it's been enough to keep, to wanna keep doing it and seems to have a benefit to everyone.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. Um I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure if these will be better for um Andrew or for Mr. Junko. Um so to start, so so in regards to hours of operation. So you said it's running from two to six now and obviously, you know, a hospital is a twenty-four hour. Site and there's action there all the time, but thi- this is relatively close to neighboring residential properties. Um was you, i- is, i- I get, my concern is just that if the the hours were to change and there could be trucks loading and it's six o'clock in the morning or six thirty in the morning. Would you be amenable to a condition that it would, uh you know, no- nothing but before eight? Just just because obviously the hospital's moving, but this.
The hospital operates throughout the twenty-four hour period and from time to time emergencies occur with. Uh ambulances and so forth coming and sometimes they make a lot of noise too. However, uh what I think would be reasonable to avoid that potential risk is to say that there'd be no uh. No generators or unloading in that area before, say, seven AM, eight AM. So eight, eight AM would be fine?
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, obviously, we understand the hospital is there, but. Ambulance coming through might be a different type of noise than, you know, a group of people unloading a vehicle or something like that.
I I think it's much, it, you're right. It's a possibility that someone could come with a a larger truck and heavier uh. Equipment, but that hasn't been the case to date, but it could happen.
All right, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to offer that if that's something the board had uh an interest in conditioning. Uh and then my second question, um. Is, so this would be, you know, it's one day a week. Um understand that it'll be limited to one day a week. Um have there been? Food trucks or anything of that nature, like serving lunch or something like that or or just really just?
It's all farmer's markets. They have to get to the board of health and it's basically producers of uh products.
Okay, great. That's, yeah, that's, that seems appropriate. Um and then my one last question and um. I know that the testimony was that the valet parking is not always used. Uh not, not, not always heavily used even during the day, but if this were to move to a weekday. Would there be any impact on the use of the valet parking or how that would function? Or would just go somewhere else on the site or?
Well, I, if if they switched it to a a weekday, the valet parking would have to uh modify. The way it uh functions if it needed at all. Uh so the answer is yes, there could still be valet parking. There's a. I I don't remember exactly, but I think there was something like nine hundred parking spaces on this site and um. So uh there has not been any parking issues associated with this market and that particular lot.
Okay, so yeah, and I think I I took a quick.
Right, wait, by the way, right now, the whole front portion of the uh parking lot is out of service because of the re- of the renovations to the uh. Uh what the en- the main entrance.
Right, right. I mean, it's also a time when there are not a lot of visitors at the hospital for obvious reasons, et cetera. So, um, okay, thank you. Just wanted to.
Yeah, I I I wanted to ask a follow up, similar what Kate was just getting at. This past year has been unusual in many regards. And including for hospitals where they have banned visitors in large measure, et cetera. So I don't know to what extent traffic and parking use of this past year is typical of what may be expected in the future. The aerial that you showed, that parking lot was pretty full. And, you know, so as a concern, when things turn to normal. You know, weekdays or weekends when there are more visitors coming, i- is that still likely to be space available?
Yes, it is. Uh however, I have to be very clear. The hospital's function is to provide the health services for the community and to meet their medical requirements. This is a, this is a community outreach issue. If it becomes a traffic issue, our clients would be compelled to say, we don't, we cannot do this. At specific times and would either modify their time to make it more suitable if it wasn't working. Or perhaps have to cancel the event. Uh this is not the tail, this tail is not wagging the dog to the hospital. The hospital is dedicated to. Healthcare and medical care to the uh, to their patients.
Uh and just to supplement that thought, the the aerial that uh was presented. Indic- it was taken at a time where the construction was happening towards the main entrance and all that parking was not available. You'll see there's a lot of earth movement in that area. So that parking will become available and reopen. So this is, you know, a snapshot of a time where you had limited parking.
Well, I'll add to that. When we did the approvals for that renovation project, part of the, part of the plan. Showed how parking lots were gonna open and close as the construction sequence through. And uh that plan has been carried out uh quite well to date and there have been no uh. Uh none, no issues that I've been aware of and this was one of the issues I did discuss with uh the chief administrator when uh. We were talking about getting this ready to come to the board.
Ralph? Other board members have a question?
I have um some comments, not necessarily questions. Uh I've been a resident of this town for over twenty-six years and I love things that have to do with our community. And I think it's wonderful that Bay Shore is doing this outreach program. I happen to be very familiar with the property. I go there regularly as a first aid squad member and I'm in driving the ambulance into the base. I'm familiar with that spot. I've also been at that farmer's market at least three times last year with my wife. So I think it's a wonderful event. I think that we are scrutinizing them a little bit too much for what they're trying to do as an outreach. They're not looking to make money. They're trying to build the community and relationship. Um I think that we're limiting, we should not limit them to one day a week. I think we should give them the opportunity, depending on the weather and conditions, that they may have more than one day a week. Uh I also feel that we should allow them. Uh cause one thing that I noticed going there is even to put a temporary sign on Home Dale Road and Beers. So people driving along Home Dale Road would be aware that this event is going on as a community outreach program. And I also feel we should not limit them not to have a generator. You can get a small generator, big enough to run a small cooler and that won't be a problem. It would, to me. Uh limit the vendors that would be able to attend this event. And I did have ice cream last year when I was there, so I'm I'm familiar with that and I also bought cheese. So I don't think the noise from the little generator is going to bother the neighbors that behind there. Being that they're used to hearing compressors and all sorts of other equipment that's on that side of that building anyway. And I've personally been back there, so I know what it sounds like. So I would like the board to consider uh giving them a little bit more leeway. Uh if they wanna have multiple days or have the option of doing it Saturday or Sunday or weekday. And not limit them to one day a week and that's up to them if they wanna use more than one week. And and my other points that I made earlier, allow them to have the generator and allow them temporary sign on Home Dale Road and even if they wanna put one up on Bethany. The day of the event.
Thank you. Well, let's take these items one at a time. The sign issue is certainly one that should be. Included in the, in a resolution because there have been issues with the sign and. Uh with regard to that whole complex and we had, there was a separate meeting on that previously. So I I would agree with you that there should be uh the provision for uh having, say. Temporary signs for when the the market is open to say a couple of them or something like that.
Ralph, can I maybe just interrupt one second? So if the boards are gonna entertain any of those ideas that Dimitri mentioned, uh the application. Is not requesting any of those items, so uh I would like at least Mr. Junko to officially. Uh say he's willing to amend his application to, for that greater relief if the boards won't forgive it. If he's not, there's no sense of considering it, because the application does not request it.
Well, uh thank you, Mr. Flagler. That's one of the easier comments I've ever been handed by this. So I would like to say that we would certainly appreciate more flexibility in that opportunity. I can uh assure you from uh my, and I've done a lot of work with this hospital. Uh and with the uh HMH system, but I can tell you that they are very concerned, mainly concerned about operating the hospital with the medical care. They will make, well, take advantage of uh uh an expanded opportunity, but it will only be. Uh as long as it can, they can still continue the level of care that they're getting, giving today at the uh Bay Shore Hospital and they intend to continue to improve that. So I would ask to amend the application.
Yeah, okay. So let's take it one item at a time. You, uh what would you like with regard to signs?
I think uh the the comment was the op- the uh ability to have a temporary sign. And I think it would have, it should be uh large enough to be effective and maybe uh. A three by five or a three by six, uh something like that, or two by four. Something to that size would be big enough to get a message and to put a directional arrow on it and make it safe.
Perhaps three, one at uh Home Dale Road, one at Bethany and then one at the entrance.
I think that would be perfect.
So uh, Mr. Chair, so I would suggest if the boards want to do that, we just let the applicant work that out with our professionals. With no more than three, as you suggested, with the appropriate size. Uh that's probably the best way to handle it.
Yeah, and and without knowing, you know, exactly the size and exactly what these signs would be, um there is a chance that they could be considered temporary signs under the ordinance. So no permit would even be needed. Um but I think that, you know, if for the resolution, it would just say subject to professional review. So, you know, I can take a look at it. Uh Lon- Lonnie's office can take a look at it, et cetera.
Correct.
All right, good. These signs, these signs already exist for events like, for example, the Greek festival at the church. We have those signs up almost a week before a festival, so it is allowed.
Yep, yep, that's exactly what I was thinking about. And that's for uh this type of temporary, I mean, or or any type of event like this for an organization. And I think that's a, it's four by eight. So that's exactly in line with what you were speaking about. So, yeah.
Ralph, before we go down this corridor, can we express some concerns?
Sure.
I did go to see it, so I understand where it is and the nature of it. Um my concern is the corridor that runs through that area is a one-way going and one-way coming, basically. So you have two lanes. Ambulances are parking right in front of the ambulance to the emergency room. And I know Dimitri knows this full well, because he goes there all the time for the EMS. And then, and the main entrance to the hospital is there right now. I don't know if that's gonna continue after the renovations are done.
Yes.
But that parking lot was completely loaded today when I was there. And this is a Wednesday, okay? And I went about two thirty. I barely found a space in the one that's closest to the building. I understand there are fifteen parking spaces there, but there's no, there's only one egress and ingress coming into this facility. What if there's a problem? And an ambulance can't get into that, into that facility in time and someone loses their life. That's my concern.
Jerry, just so you know, first of all, the ambulance is not gonna be going there much past June or July. The new section is in the front and we will be coming with ambulances through the front. Right near the street is gonna be the entrance to the emergency room. So back there uh is probably only gonna be. Uh maybe until June or July and then it won't matter as far as the emergency vehicles getting there.
So nothing will be back there after this?
No, the ha- the main entrance of the hospital is gonna be back there, but there's no emergency vehicles, as you asked.
Well, there's also parking, very narrow parking for people getting out in wheelchairs and things of that nature, handicapped.
On all those points, may I suggest that when we went through the approval process, there are standards that are established. First of all, by the Department of Health and secondly, by the township. And our application addressed all of those issues. Uh the board members, Dimitri is speaking about the sequence of the development. That was an important part of our application. And the timing that we proceeded. I think all of those issues have been carefully considered, not just by the, my clients, but also by the uh. Uh boards and the review engineers here in the township for uh the revised plan, but. Right now, there is still construction and it's a lot of construction going on, but it's gonna come to a close and uh. I, we're, the hospital is hopeful it'll be a little earlier than uh June or July, but it's likely that that's, that's about the right time. May, June, July, if 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 we get bad weather, it might spread to August, but expect to be substantially complete in that timeframe.
Okay, Jerry, is that s- satisfy you for the moment?
Uh I still have concerns, honestly, based on what I said. This is an emergency uh services facility. It's a hospital. And to me, the ancillary services of a, of a farmer's market is immaterial to the operation of that facility. So. I'm not sure how I get comfortable with that.
Well, then let me come back to Dimitri's comments. Uh one of them, another uh question of was. Opening up the number of days a week. Mr. Junko, would you care to comment about that?
Well, I I would and I would first like to uh say that generally, it it seems. That the observations are that there's generally between fifteen or twenty people at any one time. There hasn't been a overwhelming crowd yet. that the observations are that there's generally between 15 or 20 people at any one time. There hasn't been a overwhelming crowd yet. And whether or not that happens in the future, we don't know. But the primary focus is to, is to have the community interact with this team members and to be able to share this. In terms of the, uh, the, the, uh, timing, at this point, our clients would like to continue to proceed on Saturdays. But as I said, there's been some discussion between team members and the vendors and the, uh, administrators that perhaps they wanted to try a couple of, a day during the week. And, uh, it isn't settled. They want to do it on Thursday or Tuesday, but it would have to be a time that fits with the operations at the hospital.
So you want to retain the application, saying seeking one day a week?
Yes, I do. I would request that on behalf of my clients. I think it's a, it would give adequate flexibility and the ability to modify it if we have to.
And then I guess the third point that, uh, Dimitri rose, raised was the question of, uh, small generators.
Well, quite frankly, we didn't see any particular problem with the generators. Uh, so, but again, we also didn't see an overwhelming need. I think that that opportunity may give, or that may give a great opportunity to some more vendors that need, that require more cooling capacity than could be available there without it. So it, it may or may not be something that's used. But having that option, I think would give the opportunity to make it more of a community event and to spread uh, the benefits a little more, uh, well, to more people.
Uh, Bob, would you, what do you think about that thought about permitting small generators and some way you have to define small?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all. That, that's why I raised the question, Mr. Chairman. Because, uh, you know, the, a small generator, um, you know, a little home light, something that, uh, you know, could just run a, uh, maybe a, a small, of what I'll call a, uh, a, a small, uh, college dorm room gener- uh, refrigerator, just to keep, uh, things cool. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with small generators. And, but, you know, we could always check with the, uh, the fire department and the fire marshals to make sure that they're okay with it. Uh, and, uh, sure, I don't have an issue with small generators on site.
As an FYI, when we do Homedale Community Day down at, uh, at the farm, there are many generators on many vendor booths down there.
Correct.
It's the same concept.
Yeah, and I, I don't think there's any, I, I don't have any issue with generators either, especially, you know, as they would be subject to any of the other, uh, you know, township official approvals. This thing, just, just want to make sure that it doesn't become like food, food trucks versus farmer's market because
Correct, right.
That has an impact on the overall use, so.
Yeah, no refrigerator trucks.
We're not, that, that's not the, uh, that's not the intent nor the plan.
Yeah.
Right. The small generators, just to, in, if you needed for, like I said, a small dormitory refrigerator or things like that, that, uh, you know, is, it, nothing, nothing substantial, like if you needed it to run your, your refrigerator, you know.
Well, the, the way these generators are manufactured today is, uh, way different than, if I may say, our, uh, experience in the past. They run pretty quietly and they're very, they, the generator require much less power in, uh, 2020 than they did in, uh, 2000, for example.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think in terms, Marty, in terms of the resolution, um, just something like as necessary to provide, um, the sale of, of services as the standards defined, because the ordinance has
Certain products.
Yeah.
Marty, are you, are you clear?
Yeah, I'm clear. I'm, I'm not sure that's clear to the public or somebody else reading it, but, uh.
Well, I mean, there's, there's better language that we can, we can work out, but it's a
We can, uh, we can, we can leave it that, um, again, um, let the applicant propose a maximum size, kilowatt size is typically how you measure them, or some size and let, uh, Kate and Bob come up with that maximum size of the generator. Based on, I would base it on a kilowatt size or whatever is the typical measure of an output of those generators. Cause then somebody can go and check and see, you know. I mean, typically you have these house generators that are portable. They may, I don't know if those are too big in your concept of what you're talking about or not.
Are, are you okay with that, Mr. Junko?
Yes.
Uh, other questions or comments from any of the board members? At, well, first, does that address the items you were raising, Dimitri?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Then any other questions or comments from the board members?
Yeah, I have one question, uh, regarding the generator anyway. It, do we have an ordinance that, um, that restricts you from using a generator in any instance? A portable generator, like, would it stop a, a resident having a party using a portable generator?
I, I would have to look that up. I, I don't know.
So why would we, why would we pose what size generator should be used here as long as it's portable? Like, how many of us really understand the output of a generator and the, the, you know, uh, level of, of noise that it makes? I, I don't think anyone here is going to be able to tell you whether a 200 kilowatt versus a 500 kilowatt. Like, how do we, how do we put mandates on that? You know, it, it's real simple. If it's a portable generator and it's portable, it's not stationary. It's not going to be on, you know, 24 hours. It's going to be within their, their time of, of use.
There are truck-sized portable generators.
Which are, which are quieter than the small portable generators. Those are usually the ones that whisper. I know a little something about generators, but I will tell you, uh, I, I think for any of us to say what size generator they can use, I've been to this market a number of times. Uh, I, I think it's great too, Dimitri. I'll agree with you. I think it's a phenomenal addition. And, and especially with the space, I, I didn't see as much, uh, taken as they're proposing right now, but uh, they, they had a nice little thing there and it wasn't over, overly crowded. Um, I think it's either a hindrance or it's not. And if we're going to allow it, I don't think there should be as much restriction either. If it's a day a week and it's four hours and, you know, you have somebody that has to keep something cool and they're bringing a small portable generator, they should be allowed. You know, I, I, I don't think, uh, us saying what size generator is really going to make a difference. And I don't think anyone's going to be there to check and see what size generator they're using either. So I think the hospital has to use good judgment on the tenants they're going to have there, which obviously if they, if, if this limits, uh, any of the use of their ER or their parking lot and, you know, they, they stand a lot to lose with the investment they're making in that hospital. So, uh, I'm sure they're going to keep a close eye on what's happening in that parking lot. And I don't think it's anything that's ever going to generate the amount of volume that we're, you know, thinking about. This ain't a shop, right? It's a small farmer's market. And, um, I, I'm, I'm okay with it just the way it's proposed. And as far as the, the, uh, days of use, you know, four hours, I mean, I, I have no problem with that, you know, several times through the week, but certainly not the day that it's being proposed.
Yes, okay. Well, that's what they've applied for, so.
I understand. That's fine.
You know, Anthony, I, I agree with you. I think we're losing sight of the idea that the hospital is not going to endanger its mission, which is running a hospital, which they've done for decades, to provide a farmer's market a few hours, one or two days a week. I think that the hospital has enough, uh, and the, uh, professionals who run the hospital have enough, uh, wisdom to determine if the farmer's market is negatively impacting hospital operations. And then they would discontinue it or tone it back. So I don't feel that we need to sit here in super judgment of what they're doing on that site. And I think the hospital is a very, very important participant in this community. And that our role here is to make the things they ask for easier, not more difficult. Uh, because we want them to understand they're a valued part of this community. So, um, I, I support their application. And, uh, Dimitri, uh, I, I think that your comments and your additions were good ones.
Thank you, Valerie.
We do have a, we do have noise ordinances. So if, God forbid, they bring in that truck-sized one that's not quiet, the town can always enforce its ordinances, so.
Hey, Marty, I would just suggest that you don't even put a specific size, just say a portable generator, because if Bob didn't bring up the generator, we wouldn't even be putting it in the resolution. Nobody would even think about it.
I agree.
Yeah. And, and just, just from a planning perspective, my only concern is just that it doesn't make it not a farmer's market anymore. As long as it's just, you know, anything that's supporting the sales, I think it's a, I think it's a good use. And obviously it's been, it's been really successful on the property and a good part of the community.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
I have one clarification, Andrew, that exhibit you put up, or do we label that as A1? I, I didn't hear anybody.
I, I don't think we did.
You know what? Marty, we did not. So, Mr. Chairman, may I ask that our aerial exhibit be marked A1 in evidence?
Thank you.
I have it, Mark.
Any other questions or comments at this time from the board members? In that case, we'll go. This is an opportunity now for members of the public at first to ask questions of the witnesses and the testimony that they have given. Is there any member of the public listening here tonight that would like to ask a question? If so, please raise your hand. And clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised.
Okay, Juan, do any members of the public have any comments about this application? If you would like to make a comment, please re- again, raise your hand.
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, in that case, we'll close the public uh, comment, questioning period and, or turn it to Mr. Junko. Would you like to make any follow, final comments or summarize your application?
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the board's comments. Our client is primarily in the business of providing healthcare. The farmer's market is the community outreach. It's, they've deemed it to be a successful program. I would ask that the board recognize it as a use variance. We require five affirmative votes. And, um, I think we've presented all the proofs that would be essential to justify a variant, to grant the variance. Therefore, I'm going to ask the board members to vote yes for this application and permit it to be approved.
In that case, we'll close now the public hearing.
Before there's a vote, uh, or a request for a motion, there was a request from the construction official. I'll just read this into the record. This was sent by Loretta, uh, to Mr. Junko, and I was copied on it. Uh, he asked that the following language be added as a condition, that all activities carried out must comply with the fire safety permitting requirements of the Uniform Fire Code and the Construction Code requirements of the Uniform Construction Code. And I believe Mr. Junko indicated he, uh, was accepting of that, uh, condition and he can obviously
Yes, uh, earlier today, that letter was forwarded and I did respond to, uh, Loretta that, uh, that would be acceptable to our clients. Let me present, represent that to the board. We would, uh, not only, uh, accept that, we would welcome it. We not looking, we are not looking to create fire violations anywhere.
Okay.
The board members, are there any final discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we grant approval for the farmer's market with the conditions that Marty has, uh, written down.
Second.
Okay, Dimitri, and then second was by Valerie.
Ms. Avrin?
Yes.
Mr. Buffaloino?
I have to say no for the reasons that I gave earlier.
Okay, Ms. Campus?
Yes.
Mr. Hearn?
Yes.
Mr. Pesci?
Yes.
Mr. Opanatopoulos?
Yes.
And Mr. Blumenthal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, following the agenda, we have the draft meeting minutes for review and comment from the February 3rd meeting. They were submitted to the board members. I have one comment on this. This was the the meeting where, uh, there was a issue with the posting of the Zoom link. And we reaffirmed the events of that meeting on February 17th. And I, I believe, I suggest that some note to that effect should be included in the minutes here.
I, I already did that, Ralph. I didn't, I just didn't send it out, but it is included.
Did anyone have any other additions or corrections to the minutes?
No.
As submitted. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Nancy?
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, minutes passed. These will be posted on the website, just so you know.
Okay. Uh, do we have any other reports? Uh, Bob?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Marty?
Nope.
Kate?
Nothing here.
Anyone have any other business for this evening?
No.
If there is none, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
I'd
Before you, before you all go, I have three backyards on from March 17th. All three are for built-in pools. So, um, the application packets, if anybody wants hard copies, otherwise the documents will be put up on the website.
I would like a hard copy.
Likewise. Likewise.
Me too. I want a hard copy too.
Okay.
Loretta, you gonna send me?
Sitting in the
Yes, I will send them. One person didn't give me everything yet. They'll be going out Friday.
Okay.
Okay.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
If you want to enjoy the rest of the